Okay. It is July 15, 2024, 10 o'clock. I'm calling this meeting to order roll call, smiley.
Here.
Damien.
Here.
May I mark the here? Number four, approval of the minutes of last meeting, July 8th, 2024. Any additions or corrections anybody saw?
So many.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
Okay, number five, approval of warrants and claims.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
Number six, discussion possible action regarding the Tacoma Fire Department, 1990, C-grade fire truck. Okay, I guess you're up, pal.
So the county owns the truck.
Okay.
We put the money into it as a fire department to get it back moving. It's been replaced with that REIT grant, we got a newer truck. We would like for it to go to the State Fire Museum, they said they would take it, but I don't know what we have to do to get you guys as, you know, surplus to how it goes through the process.
So, I'm good with that, these other guys are.
Yeah, we don't really have no use for it, right?
Right.
There's nothing that can be used on it, other than museum parts?
We've pulled everything that's worth anything off of it, so.
And, and I'm all about that, there's no need of anybody putting any more money in it.
Yeah.
And.
Did you say that one time it had to be run up before they could take it?
Yep.
Is it running now?
Yeah. We, we spent the money and got it fixed, so.
Well, I guess, and I don't know if this would be legal and we need to wait till the next meeting, we probably need the surplus at first.
Right, we'll have to surplus it.
And so.
Go through the process.
Go through the process.
Why are we gonna transfer it to the, to the, this museum outfit, or do we need to find out who they are?
Once we, once we surplus it, she can put on there, we can find out, if you'll tell us where it's gonna go, we'll put it on the agenda right with the, the surplus.
Yep.
And it's what, what's gonna happen with it.
Okay.
And so, I guess.
Side question.
Okay.
Would you guys wanna loan out a little boy and tote it down to the city?
Where is it at down there?
Uh, kinda between Oklahoma City and Norman, it's right off I-35, it's right at the Oklahoma Public Safety deal.
I don't think that'd be a problem.
I mean, we, we would drive it, it's just, I would hate for it to break down on the interstate or something.
No.
Cause we're on holiday.
Yeah, no need.
Drive it up on the trailer and drive it off would be best.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think we can handle that.
Yeah, that won't be a problem.
Okay, but anyhow, I guess, we just, we'll follow through with this, we'll just take action.
Just table it till last week?
Well, we can, yeah, or we address it, just, just make a motion that we'll, uh, put it on the agenda for next week to be surplused.
Okay.
And how we're gonna dispose of it.
Okay.
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aight.
So, I'll get you some contact info.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else?
Not for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna skip down to number 15?
Oh, okay.
Megan.
That'll be fine, yes.
Unless you wanna sit through the whole meeting. Well, I'll do whatever you need.
We'll just, we'll just skip down to 15 and let you be. And number 15, discussion possible action regarding the use of courthouse lawn and parking lot for the crazy days on 7/20/24.
Yeah, that's a Saturday, so I'm just not open with the chamber, um, and kinda our legs aren't getting up to you, so anything else, we'll try to get earlier and all the books.
Well, that, I gave Jennifer a verbal the other day, but I just, I don't know the schedules when I get caught off guard like that. I don't wanna schedule two things on the lawn at once unless we talk to them.
Right.
But, I guess it's open.
I guess it is.
Okay, well, thank you.
I'll make sure, I think it is.
Yeah.
And then, were you wanting to have the fire departments break this down?
Yes, yeah, they're gonna, um, I talked to the fire department and the police department, and they acted like that would be no big deal to have them come hose down the kids at the end of our Oregon fight on Saturday.
So, they wanted to know if they could do it on the lawn, or if they could do it in the street?
I don't have any idea.
Is it gonna be on Friday?
I'm gonna count on those guys to know that, so.
Oh.
Well, this is not in December, right?
No, this is different, that's the second thing I'm gonna talk about.
I mean, those different for that.
Yeah.
Oh, this is not about this.
Yeah, that's the next thing I'm gonna talk about, this weekend, yeah, it's just crazy days, it'll be shopping downtown, and then.
You want to do something with the fire department here with kids?
This Saturday.
This Saturday?
Yeah.
And then this is, uh, down the road?
That's Christmas, that's down the road.
Okay. No, I mean, you're gonna have food trucks, but no board bodies?
Right, right, I think we're just gonna have, actually, the wicked grind, I think is the one that's gonna be down there, um, and it's mostly drinks and cookies. So I don't think that, um, we'll be needing board bodies down there, who'll be coming and doing?
Down there, where are you doing it?
On the courthouse lawn, over here.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, sorry, yes.
What's crazy days, or is this, this little?
It's a, it's a chamber retail event, so all of the local shops do a bunch of discounts, and people get up at seven and go start shopping. And so we're trying to bring more people involved by having kind of a family Sunday, and then that night is the, the big cruise and car show with Race, and it's usually a pretty big event, they've got three bands coming, and then they'll have food trucks on the Boulevard too, so we're trying to make it a big local retail event.
Awesome.
Wow, that's awesome.
And that's next week?
This Saturday.
Seven, twenty?
And the cruise is?
Saturday night, at eight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So go up, take your lawn chairs out and park somewhere, and, uh, it's usually a pretty good turnout.
It really is.
They had two bands, and now they just added a third one, so Race is handling the part of the Boulevard, and Chambers handling the part downtown, and around the shoppers.
Uh-huh.
So.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so the next thing is this Bring Christmas Home for the Holidays, it's a pretty big event that we're trying to do on Chambers side to where families can plan their family Christmases, like come to Alba on this weekend, cause we're gonna have lots to do. So if you turn it over to the backside, we have two days, um, one and a half days full of things to do, and what I'm asking of the county commissioners is to help me get a giant cedar tree down on the courthouse lawn. So I just need help with that, I've talked to the city of Alba, and they will help with equipment and setting it up, but I need it, I don't know how that works, uh, cause we'd like for it to be like a turn the lights on, the trees lit.
Christmas tree?
Big Christmas tree.
Bring the tree to town, and where are you planning on putting that up?
Wherever you tell me I can, on the courthouse lawn, cause if you look at, um, Friday night, we'll do the, the lighting of the tree, and we've got Christmas carolers, we've got Polaroid hands, we'll do a soup and stroll dinner, I'm gonna have, try to have that sponsored, so everybody gets a free cup of soup. Um, and then the retailers will be open late that night, I talked to kids and cops, and they're gonna do a kid movie, either outdoor on the lawn if it's a beautiful December, and if it's kind of a little bit cooler, we'll throw it into the extreme. Uh, and for the Santa and Grinch on courthouse lawn, I've talked to the library, and they're gonna collect gently used books and wrap them, so every kid that comes through gets a wrapped Christmas, or wrapped book.
Nice.
Then the first Friday art walk is also that, that night, so we'll turn on the tree, we'll decorate it, uh, and that'll be Friday night. And Saturday, it starts at 7:00 a.m., it goes all day with events, uh, for kids, trying to make it as free as possible, because we want everybody to come home and shop local, shop homegrown, have the farmer's market, anybody that does canned goods downtown, try to do it in conjunction, if, uh, the, the Christmas craft show we'll make this year, it'll be out in Fairgrounds, so hopefully we'll have people kinda all over Alba doing some Christmas shopping. Northwestern has that, um, shootout for all the little schools for festival, so we should have some people local that weekend for that. Also, Northwestern commencement is Sunday, so we'll have people in town Friday night for that, and I think it's gonna be a huge hit. And I've got almost all of this confirmed, so I'm feeling pretty good about it, I just need to confirm that we can get a big tree. And that, so I need a size tree, like you tell me.
That's the only thing that concerns me, is the tree.
Yeah.
Now, all that, us being responsible first, adding the tree up too.
Here's, here's, here's my question.
Yep.
How, how long do you want this tree up?
I, I don't know, I, 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 this is all new, so whatever you guys think, I know that Cherokee does a pretty good sized one. Um, it might be, might be 20 feet, 15 to 20 feet, um, and we don't have to go giant the first year. Uh, I'd like to wow it with something down there that's lit up and feels Christmasy, and I don't know, this is scheduled to, to start on December 7th, or 6th. So you did run it for the month of December, or?
This being in December?
Uh.
My suggestion, we set one up in Freedom, in the town of Freedom.
That's right, in that one.
And.
Yeah, you gotta do it.
I, uh, my suggestion is we do it right out here on, in the parking lot, right next to, to the sidewalk that goes to, because we have to take those big concrete blocks and put all the way around it, and cable it down to them to hold it up.
Okay.
And I just sue not tear the yard up.
Right.
Doing that, because it takes those, you know what I'm talking about, those four of them, yeah.
Yeah, like 4,000 pounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, and then we take cable and fasten the tree to that to hold it up there on all four sides.
And keep people away from it.
Have you seen how they do it over there?
I know what he's talking about, yeah, the one at, the one at Cherokee, they've dug it, they've got a, a big huge pipe that they've dug down far enough, and, and they cover it for the rest of the year, so that's always where their tree goes. It's in their pocket park on Main Street, um, but, yeah, I'm fine with whatever, and so for the lighting, we would just bring everybody around to the side and.
Will there be people on it, decorating it, kids climbing through?
No kids, um, there's, yeah, there's potentials, we're talking to the retail committee, um, and for a fundraiser for the chamber, is to do some big bulbs that you could hang on it, and people could, uh, I could maybe talk to Lance about doing a sticker that would sponsor your business, and then there'd be a fundraiser to hang a bulb up there, so that might be the only thing that we consider, but that's not set in stone at all.
Well, we could figure out, I'm not sure how we hold that at the place, I don't, if we've made it, a stand for it.
Or something.
But, here's my first thought, if not on the concrete, right in the corner between the parking lot and the sidewalk going to the, the post office, we could set it on the grass, kind of out of the parking lot, but where we didn't have to drive all over the grass to, around it, to tear it up, because we have no clue what the weather's gonna be like.
Right.
And we could pretty much do that from the concrete. And, I'm not supposed to bury a pipe if, to do it, but I don't, we don't do that, cause we set it up in the streets out there.
And I like that, cause visually in Cherokee, I mean, in Freedom, yeah, everybody can see it, and you drive around it, and it's just a part of Christmas every day. So I do like that idea, um, but I can take a picture and talk to the, the Cherokee people and see how deep that goes, and the diameter of the, um, pipe, just get an idea.
I mean, I'm just, I just hate to tear the yard up.
Right.
With, cause it, it'll take a loader and.
Right.
That stuff, I mean, a skid steer will handle those blocks, but they're, they're loaded.
Yeah.
And you're gonna tear the grass up with a skid steer or a loader.
Right, and I don't wanna do that, and I kinda, you guys should tell us what, what would you do?
I mean, if you think that'd work, it's where my, I think it, it should go.
Now, you're talking, like, from here, this little corner?
I'm talking right out here in the middle of the parking lot to the east of it.
Okay.
Between just.
Yeah, cause you can also get people down here, get your, your P A system to announce.
And on Friday night and Saturday, you'll pretty much have the whole parking lot.
Yeah, oh yeah, there will be.
In case it is muddy or.
Except for a couple of Iowa ones, always.
And if we have food trucks, uh, kids and cops are gonna have food downtown, down here, and then back's gonna donate pizza for Pizza by the Slice downtown. Um, they might have a couple of other food trucks, so that takes up part of that area, but do you see any problem with them, you know, getting in if we had any food trucks?
Oh, we're gonna put it in the middle, if we do it right there on the edge of the parking lot, I don't think.
Okay, that should be a problem.
And I think we've got electricity out there for the lights.
Okay, yeah.
I think so too.
Now, we, it's really not in the best interest for that electricity beat for the food trucks, they need generators.
Right, that's what I've been told, yeah.
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 But the Christmas tree, I don't see a problem with lighting, yeah.
Now, on the lights, is that city of Alba, on the downtown lighting that happened, or is that you guys?
Yes.
Okay, so I gotta look at funding for getting lights strung, uh, they, I think they'll help me with the budget, so I'll put money for that, so. Okay, if you guys are on board, then we're gonna try to make it a big, big to do.
Okay, well, first I need a motion to approve the steel for this one.
Oh, yeah.
On favor?
I'll have a form for you next month for the.
For this one?
But, we need to put that before we approve it on the.
On the agenda.
Well, for the, on the books that they talked about beating.
Yes, right.
Okay, alright.
For the Christmas.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for listening to me, and supporting. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Hope everything turns out well.
It will.
If you have any problems, then it will.
Okay, number seven, discussion possible action regarding the road crossing permits, C M X.
Um, looks like it's District One, there's no fee, it's in 152914 and 172914.
What is C M X?
C M X. Yeah, um, you remember?
Call it something?
We've had him before, C M X.
Yeah.
Um.
Had it in that court field, is it, is it a partner? I mean, it doesn't matter, I just mean, I'm nosing, but, I mean.
Yeah, we've had him before, but I can't remember, it's fresh water.
Right up on State Line, probably.
Well, I know that, uh, that we got all the way to the end.
Okay.
We got a well getting drilled up there somewhere?
You wanna make a motion to approve it?
I'll make the motion.
What is it?
Freshwater.
It's freshwater?
It's a drill.
I'm sorry, just that.
On favor?
Aight.
Yes.
Everybody's hunters, man?
Oh, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, number eight, discussion possible action regarding the surplus and junking of the Dell computers in the issue office, ID number E250 dash zero one five.
So many.
So many.
Two things.
Okay, number nine, discussion possible action regarding the surplus and junking of a, of three Dell laptops, or I guess that's three different ones, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Laptops to the exercise board, ID number X250 dash zero zero one, X250 dash zero zero two, and X250 dash zero zero three.
And they're just obsolete.
On favor?
Aight.
There's right four foots.
Dispose of them, or?
Yeah, um.
Gonna have to do that again, or?
Yeah, they're, they're gonna be, um, jumped, and, um.
Okay, did I read that?
Did I put on it?
Did it surplus anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Four.
Yeah, this one.
Oh. What's that fourth one for? There was only three.
Three, I don't know.
Yeah, but there's one of them's to surplus all of them, and then the other one is dispose each individual. Cause you can't dispose all of them on one sheet anymore.
Oh, oh.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, number 10, discuss possible action regarding the surplus and junking of a Explorer tablet, ID number ED250 dash O28, Smart Pro, UPS ID, ED number 240 dash 002, Sony Notebook, ID number ED250 O29, GPS ID number ED219 dash 003, Tablet ED number 250 dash O36, and Plotter ED number 260 dash 001 for the 911.
That's a mouthful.
Yeah.
So many.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
Is there just two?
Uh, no, there's a whole bunch more, but that's just the surplus.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say.
I hope I. I hope I put all on there.
Who's that, Matt and stuff?
It's the last one.
Water and all that.
I didn't put that on it, cause I didn't go, I had two pages, so sorry. I'll put it on next week, so we can all just have the time to.
Okay, this one time?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know. I liked it better when we could just type all this on a.
One deal?
One deal, but it's just crazy that now that they made this, they're using this one. We may have our own one, and got away with it for a long time, but now. Thank you.
Just get a printer.
Alright.
Now we're on to the painful stuff, number one, discussion possible action regarding HACOS Sig. The insurance at fiscal year 2425, resolution of payment option for Woods County property and liability in the amount of $185,963.
And last year it was $148,000, one and ten dollars.
Went up about 35, I don't know.
Well, they all came and they reevaluated the buildings and equipment, and I think, I hope they got everything in order, because prior to last year, I think, or whatever, we had stuff we were insuring that we didn't even own anymore. We'd turned it in, but they didn't take it off.
Right.
And so, they probably added some their more expensive stuff.
Probably.
Buildings, buildings are more expensive, so.
And we've got, I went ahead and boasted enough to do the one thing option.
So, so many.
Like.
$185,963, is that a single payment for one year, or?
Yeah, that's the cheapest way, that's option one.
Yeah, it'd be about $3,000.
On favor?
Option one, yeah.
Alright.
So, you and you, right?
I made the motion.
And both of these are for that, right?
Right.
This is an option. Okay, number 12, discussion possible action regarding HACOS Sig fiscal year 2425, resolution of payment option for Woods County, enhanced 911 property and liability in the amount of $8,299.
And last year it was $7,708.
Well, that's not too much for me.
No.
Why is it, why is it separate from testing insurance?
It's pro, well.
I don't ask, I don't matter.
I don't know, it's the liability or the difference.
Is for like cars, trucks, everything together, maybe property?
Well, both are property and liability.
Liability and, and, but, uh.
Option.
Yeah, they, it's the, the call stations and the computers and stuff.
Probably all that in there.
And then their liability, as far as.
Also, I got you.
On favor?
Right.
That, I think the thing is, is that's kind of a standalone deal in there. Okay, number 13, discussion possible action regarding fiscal year 2024 contract renewal for Oklahoma Office of Juvenile Affairs for Detention Transportation.
I'm not that motion.
On favor? Okay, number 14, discussion possible action regarding order of appointments of new members to the Woods County industrial development authority.
And I, I don't know if there's really new, but it's just, it's probably new, it's same ones.
Yeah. It, and that, that'd be Bob Baker, Melissa Fisher, Roddy Bush, myself, and Stan Carney.
Turn off that motion, approve?
Yeah. On favor?
Sorry, I stamped it upside down.
That's right. I'm gonna rent my glasses on, I can see which one. If I put my glasses back on, I can't even read them.
It is upside down. It's okay, we all did it, didn't we?
So, Jeremy, sell her off.
We did sign this stuff for, uh, Megan, right, or that deal?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so we've already done fifteen?
Yes.
Okay. Number sixteen, discussion possible action regarding McGrabble temporary easement received from Rick Deans.
I get dirt and him and I haven't in a long time and I don't know, uh.
Well, it's in case you decide to.
Just to, to keep it up, just, yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. It's just, yes, if we call on the gravel, it could be something different.
On Apache, it's a hard dirt.
Down there. That's just the fact that you can go get it there if he takes care of you in there getting it.
Yeah.
Okay, seventeen, approve the de-obligated and reallocated REIT twenty-two twenty-five funds in the amount of forty dollars for Greenleaf Fire Department grant.
And that's just formality, they have to send us that letter and we have to approve it for their records for that REIT grant.
I'm not that motion to approve?
I'll second that.
On favor. Okay, number eighteen, new business.
I don't really have any. Talked to Susan a little bit, but I don't know. It's not the same as it was, nothing new.
Well.
Haven't talked to the Allen people.
Okay. On about the meeting I went to last Thursday about the, uh, football field parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
All they're really asking is the in-kind work. They have the funding to, to do what they wanna do up there. And the first, they're gonna do it in two phases.
We just want us to kind of do the work for them, chip them all and stuff like that.
Just essentially prep it and haul the chips. And hire, hire the B N H to do it, and they're only gonna do half of it now and after football season. Then, and that'd be the west half. And I think there just needs to be some, a little patching done on it to get it ready for them. Clean up, I mean, we might broom it off to get it as clean as possible and then they'll come in and.
Do they wanna put blacktop in there or raft or?
I, I, in where, in that, uh.
That hagut stuff, there's a couple of spots.
No, I, I think there was talk at that meeting, i- in, on the west side, there is.
Well, there's, there's a few on the west side, kinda like what we was talking about over on that east side where it tigered off, you know? I, I drove all around it and I found a few over there too.
Yeah, but there's not, not anything, a load of hot, hot mix with.
I think a load would probably do it.
Yeah, that's what, that's kind of what we discussed. Well, over there, I think that they're gonna, that part over there, they're talking about concrete.
Yeah, they oughta do something to reduce the time that.
Yeah, and they gotta work on the drainage that's going that way.
Yeah.
And they're definitely gonna put a concrete drain.
Yeah.
But, but there, that's gonna be put off till after, the east side's gonna be put off till after football season. The west side, and I called B N H and they can be here the last week of August or the first weekend set here. And there may be a high school game in that timeframe, but if they get here, the first college game is not till, like, the first weekend or second, I don't know, he's got it in September, so probably.
That's kind of the plan.
Yeah, and, and we'll just help out. Essentially, like I said, it's just kind of in-kind work for us to do on the chips. Uh, not sure what the square footage is, but, uh, I'll have to get that.
You know, it's, you know, we're talking three, three, about like three mile.
Three and a half.
It's, it's a lot more than that. It's, it's gotta be, it's gotta be up there like forty-five hundred ton of rock to do that parking lot.
You have just the west end?
Huh?
You have just the west side?
Well, square, four hundred fifty, uh, thousand square feet, you know, or, you know, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, four hundred and fifteen thousand is what, what they had on there. And I just divided, I took five.
When I, when we done the, the city of Winoka, all them streets, that was a hundred and thirty thousand. And that was a lot of rock. We had, there was a hell of a big pile of rock there when we chipped that before. You, you probably hauled it in. You could probably look back and see fifteen years or so when we, when we brought it in.
Yeah, uh, but I think they just wanna haul in that for the west now.
Yeah.
And because that's all their interest, they're just gonna go up to that point.
Yeah.
And all I can go by is what they said the square footage was on that four hundred and fourteen thousand. And see, I figured.
Hundred and ten thousand.
You could got Google map it and.
Yeah, give you an acre.
Something like that.
I, I got the Google map of it, but those two, the east and west side together, they said was four hundred and fourteen thousand, little over.
It'd be about three and a half miles.
I just used twenty-two foot wide at a mile. It, uh, that's ten thousand, five hundred and sixty square foot in a mile.
It's a hundred and six or sixty.
Hear that right?
What we bring up, millions.
No, it's a hundred and sixteen thousand, uh, square feet in a mile.
Make that twenty good or whatever.
Yeah, so, and that's less than, than four miles. Is.
Now, is that for the total or just the west side?
That, no, I, they don't have me the square footage. They're supposed to be getting me the square footage on the west side. So we can just, it will haul a little extra.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Uh, but, uh, you know, so in case, and they don't mind a small pile up there, but they just assume do it in the phases. So, uh, see, four miles, John, would be four hundred and, uh, about four hundred and, oh, close to four hundred and fifty.
Square feet.
Square feet, four miles would be close to that. So if their figures are right on that, uh, and here, I've got a Google Earth map that they gave me up there. And I, I don't, I'm waiting on a price from B N H because the parking lot is different.
Yeah, he, he'll know exactly.
Yeah, but he was gonna Google Earth it, but it's essentially from here, this is the west.
This is the west.
This is the, this is the east.
Pocket set.
Yes. Right. And they're gonna do this here to here. But see, no, this green now is the parking lot. And see, they got that four hundred and fourteen and they told me that was all of this green was the square footage of that, all of that green. So. Yeah, and they're gonna do, they wanna do some work in here to get the drainage in here. You can almost tell that's a little bit of a different color right there, that that's where that slope goes off and that's all messed up. But Roy easily said, you know, he said we can concrete almost the same price as, as overlay or put in, uh.
Blacktop.
Blacktop. So I don't, it tickled me pink if they did that.
At least make some drains and then slide for that all to go off.
Right, that's what.
Focus that water instead of just.
Yes, that's what they're talking about, is bringing all three of these, these curls essentially in and taking it across here. They gotta see, there's houses over here, so they're gonna have to get north of there to dump it. But this, kinda that color pretty much tells you where that stuff is messed up. You can just barely see it there, but anyway, it's, uh, they've got the funding and they're just asking for our help and taking care of it, so. And anyway, so.
Thirty-two loads was the whole thing.
It just doesn't seem like it helping any, but I don't know.
How many tons did you figure on that per mile?
Well, I just did four miles at a hundred and eighty ton.
Okay, that's, that shouldn't overdo it, yeah, so.
So about thirty, thirty-one or two loads for the whole.
Yeah. Yeah, so twenty to twenty-five loads will probably do that west side.
Definitely.
Okay, number nineteen, approve this free blank purchase order.
So moved.
Second.
On favor. Number twenty, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion too.
We're done.